I'd like to call this meeting of the Tasswell Town Council to order, and I would like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance public gathering location.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask our town manager, Todd Day, if he'll lead us to an invitation.
Yeah, let's probably get the prayer. Our heavenly Father, again we come before you. We're humbled in your presence, Lord. We appreciate the opportunity that we have to gather. We want to thank you for a beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. We ask that you'll be with this governing body tonight as they make their decisions. We ask that those decisions be made in the glory of your son. We ask that they are secondly in the best interest of this community. Or we ask that you'll guide each one of these individuals that are here this evening to their homes, back to their places where they will reside the rest of the evening. Give us all safe travels. We ask this in your son's name, and pray. Amen.
We have several special presentations or presentation requests, and I would like to ask these folks to come forward when they're called upon. First of all, a thank you from the Attitude Arts Academy and Anna Jaster.
Can you use your phone?
My name is Bella Hunt, I'm going to fifth grade and I'm Ben.
My name is Summer, I'm sixth, and I'm going to Tasswell Elementary School.
I'm Hannah, I'm eighth grade.
My name is Summer, I'm sixth, and I'm going to Tasswell Elementary School.
I'm Hannah, I'm seventh grade.
I'm Emily People, and we're here with Attitude Arts Academy. And we came here today to thank you all for your dedication that helped us go to nationals. We attended the Ultimate All-Stars Nationals June 20th through 23rd. We all had a wonderful time, made some friends, had great experiences. We also had a lot of accomplishments while we were there, and I'd like to tell you about those. All six of us here today are members of the Ultimate All-Stars team. The Ultimate All-Stars team consisted of dancers from the highest scoring dances at all of Ultimate Stars Dance Productions' regional dance competitions. For the All-Stars team, we went, we learned to dance on Saturday night with some guest teachers, and we performed for the competition on Sunday morning. Bella competed a solo, and she received an ultimate gold rating. Paige also competed a self-choreographed solo and received an ultimate gold rating. I also competed a solo. I received a platinum rating and first place overall, level three, which is the highest level, young adult solo. Bella, Hunter, Paige, and myself competed in the national Mr. and Miss Ultimate Stars title competition. We are selected to compete in this at regional competition based on our solo performances and our sportsmanship. There were 71 dancers total that competed for national titles. Bella received an honorable mention in the Little Miss category. Paige received an honorable mention in the Young Miss category. Hunter received the Top Photogenic Award, Top Talent Award, Top Interview Award, and Top Evening Wear award. And he was crowned 2019-2020 Mini Mr. or Ultimate Stars. In my category, I received the Top Photogenic Award, the Top Talent Award, the Top Interview Award, and the Top Evening Wear award. And I was crowned 2019-2020 Young Adult Miss Ultimate Stars. So again, we'd like to thank you all for your dedication that helped us achieve these awesome awards. Sorry. I competed a trio with Paige and Bella. And they all left you out. And they received an ultimate gold rating as well. Thank you all so much for that. While I'm here, I'd also like to announce that I will be opening the Attitude Dance Center in August.
Where will that be located?
It will be in the four-way shopping center.
Great, excellent. Perfect. Thank you. Good job. Congratulations.
We thank each of you all for sharing with us. Susan, can we get one more of them up front with the vice mayor?
Julie stands on the line.
Alright, good job. We congratulate each of you and thank you for sharing with us. I'm glad to hear about the Tasswell location opening in the fall. We're excited about that. And we're pleased that we were able to have a little part making possible for you all to participate.
Thank you all.
This time, we have a request for an aerosol tournament at Lincolnshire Park on November 8th by Mr. Drennan Lee.
Hi everyone, we appreciate you all meeting with us here. My name is Drennan Lee, I've lived in Tasswell my whole life. We need you all with me. And for your request for use of Lincolnshire Park weekend of November 8th through 10th, I run on the side of a company called Data Events. We travel through five states, and we put on simulations using aerosol rifles. If you've not heard of aerosol rifles, very similar to a hollow gun issued, little white five-degree BBs that disappear a few weeks after being wet. My partner here is from North Detroit Aerosol. He runs an aerosol field down in Oregon. We, like I said, we put on close to 30 games, including two at Lincolnshire before, Fairgrounds, Blue Stone. We're really proud to be able to bring in people to Tasswell and Hassel County. And I would like Jack to help you a little bit more, and why, hand some stuff out.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Tasswell, again, my name is Jack Flair. I'm North Detroit Aerosol. I've been partnering with Drennan since 2012. And one of our first games here at the Fairgrounds. And since then, we brought in just shot a thousand people to Tasswell County. About 5% local within the Hallow tribe, everybody else is from that. Furthest north has been Detroit. Team traveled through Cherokee all the way down to come play with us. And then as far south is Savannah, Georgia. And then also far into Tennessee, in Nationals. As far west, the group people in the area to come play with us. A place that is not, unless it's running more of a simulation, we'll set up a scenario and say, alright, this is happening. How do you all want to react? What are you going to do to do this? And we just had a lot of fun. We even have a reputation. We will leave the field clear when we found it. And it's something we've got a long time ago, and it's something we do, carry on through here. But we just like to request the use of the park. We hadn't used it before, but took the initiative or got the invite from the parents. We talked to y'all about it, let y'all know what more we would do. And jumped on that to let y'all face these bargaining facilities.
So y'all just used the lower part of the soccer field, y'all don't go by the lane?
Yes.
The lane was the whole thing? The last time they did it, they used the entire lane. The last time they were scheduled, we dropped the ball and just a major lack of communication. They ended up going to the Blue Stone Park and playing. But they, the police department also had training with them on that same day. And it's pretty interesting that it brings a crowd into out of town. So I don't know if most of you are aware of this, but it was all sort of... It's been a pretty good show, and I was telling Drennan, the only thing that they would need to do obviously is to get y'all blessed to have it. We've got plenty of time to schedule it, let people know when we close that day. And also be sure that Ben doesn't have any conflict with other events there that day.
Drennan, is that far across country when they have, because they're going to have the Regent District or something here this year, do you know?
I don't know the date. That's all I would like... We've already scheduled two locations, and on that date, we're trying to get the same. I think it should be before that, though. I'm not sure, but we can work around it. If we can get it for any part of the weekend, like we'll work with you all. Because this event that we want to do, we're using limited to the number of people we can bring into Tasswell because of venues and everything. So we'd really like to see if we can get it between 250 to 300 people coming to Tasswell. We've been up to 125 in Tasswell before in Tasswell. And a lot of people don't know we're here. We'd like that. And since we've done it a lot, we'd like that you get out-of-town people and people involved here because it's really good for teenagers and young adults too. Because we have people anywhere from 10 to 70 that come to these things. So, but if we can get enough venues, every time we get another location, we can say, alright, we're going to open it up to even more people. And that's why we use like a whole day.
Well, if the council will approve it, what we can do, and we'll work with the dates and the towns, we'll decide if we should...
Yeah, we don't want anything like anything...
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and also to not only approve it, but to make it an annual event.
Alright, okay. We've had our second motion.
Is there any discussion? Do you all want to say something else before we proceed? They're anxious.
No, we have several events in Tasswell a year. And like I said, we try to keep it sort of a secret and keep it down low, but...
Don't do that.
You know, it's just, you know, people come in, and that's our goal, is to bring people into the area. And we'd really like to now say, you know, like not just residents. Our people come from Detroit and Indiana, and I think we had someone from Alabama. We've had people from Alabama.
Georgia.
Yeah, Georgia. So we'd like to try to get the locals to give some of the young population something too. In addition to...
We'll help you advertise too. Because if you've got a motion, the second mayor doesn't need to...
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Hold opposed? Thank you. Thank you for coming, Brad.
All you'll need to do is get in touch with Ben. Just get in touch with him sometime this week or next week. Be sure to schedule, and also Coach Keen. He's in front of you a little bit.
Yeah, because even if they need the park for Saturday for the race, well, we need to come in after the race to use it. Because like I said, we're using it all weekend. So if it needs to be used Saturday, well, we can leave it alone after the race. And then use it, because we do all weekend. These people come in for experience. So we will work around these things. If you give it to us, we will...
You got it. Check with Ben, and you're good to go.
Thank you. We have a special presentation by manager Dave.
Oh yeah, we do. I almost forgot about this. It was on the agenda, didn't it? Okay. Well, up until, I guess it was last week, there were two people in Tasswell County that had a building certification. Two people in Tasswell County. So how many contractors are there in Tasswell County, Chris? I know you know. Well, I can tell you, there's five town managers. So there are very few and far between. But there's only two that have a certification as certified building official. But now we have three in Mr. Chris Hurt. So congratulations, V. He has passed all three of his tests successfully. His real estate value has went up tremendous. It has. The biggest thing, when I first started here, the reason that, you know, I wanted to bring Chris on was not his own, but it was to offer the citizens of Tasswell the opportunity to build and construct a more practical and speedy and efficient manner. And so we're, you know, we'll eventually get there. It'll be a while, but, you know, we'll transfer all inspections over to our own locality.
Thanks.
So you'll be able to do it in-house. Tasswell County's done a wonderful job, but look at where they may be at. So they'll schedule here to look at footers or inspect footers. And I know, I know Ms. Davis, you know exactly what I'm talking about when it comes to inspection. So having a certified building official right here in the house is going to be a pretty good deal for our citizens. So congratulations, Chris. Give him a hand. Speak, speak, speak.
The microphone's yours.
I appreciate the opportunity you gave me. I'm working hard towards where we can get everything finalized on it.
It'll be a while, but we're proud.
We got to adopt the codes and go through all kinds of stuff before we can proceed with it.
We're proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes. We have the work session and the council meeting minutes from June 11th, 2019.
So do we... Get them separate or together? Of, you know, two-pound bass and a pound and a half, two-pound bass. Blue gills the same way, olive fish. Well, you can read the report, but this has been a long time coming. But Ben is checking on catfish to see about the possibility of stocking catfish. It would actually be productive for us to put a predator fish, like a flakhead, that is a predator fish in there to help thin out the number of bass that are in there. That way they'll grow larger, and they'll be able to pull up better fish than we've got right now.
Could we do something like short-term, like slot amount, where you encourage people to keep some of the smaller ones?
Yeah, V, it's not a thing I... St. Patrick's Day, you know, the fishery controls that.
They pay that later.
They control the trout number. They control the fishery out there, how many... It doesn't mean we can't put in a request based on...
Yeah, just to be in short-term, like slot.
You did something. I know Ben's got competitions, fishing tournaments planned, and he's working on a lot of things he's going to have happen. So anyway, I just wanted to give you another... And if you look at the seconds to the last, Paige in that report, actually, sorry, but it's got some grass in there, might make better fish. This raw corroded grass worked a little bit.
Okay, uh, what about the retainer agreement? Okay, um, the retainer agreement is simply an agreement where we do professional interviews. If you'll recall, Cancel looked at one group and we also created a committee for staff. But the retainer agreement, if something were to happen in town and we needed an engineering firm immediately, like some emergency somewhere, it gives us the right through Virginia procurement to go to an engineering firm that's qualified in that area. So the, um, T&amp;L was one that was selected. There were three other firms that we selected that will also get contracted to town. And again, they're just if we need them. Um, T&amp;L was up, was selected at the highest. Um, they selected, they were scored the highest. So that contract right there is just a retainer that Cancel needed to, to vote to receive this.
Do I hear such a motion?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All in.
All opposed? Memorandum of understanding, number one, updated line mapping, hydraulics, leak detection.
Yes, uh, Vice Mayor Mullins, we also received a grant, a $35,000 grant sometime back to update water mapping, just to map and now show if we're valid, et cetera, that. That $35,000 grant can be drawn down by the use of the retainer agreement. And by the way, T&amp;L coincidentally also applied and got us that grant. Um, so, um, this contract is for that hydraulic mapping for T&amp;L. I just need a motion to approve the sign.
Do I hear such a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Aqua Park, rates discussion.
Okay, we had a big weekend.
We did.
We did. Had a big weekend. It actually defined perfectly exactly what I know I was looking for in, in the reading for dropping the rate. So just to let you know, unless you've got any objection, and everybody in the room wants to first to know, but we will be leaving the $5 rate for the pool and the aquapark, just like last Saturday and Sunday, for the remainder of the swim season. And if you've got any objection to that, let me know.
I don't have objection, I think we should do it.
All right, keep going. So we're gonna leave that rate. There was, what, over 500 people, Ben?
Yeah.
There was over 500 people.
Unless you bring in about $1,100 on the.
No, it was three, four thousand.
Yeah, it was close to that. We had two thousand on Saturday, though.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
It was, it was, it was actually scary for some of them, boys and.
(laughing).
You know, they, adult life jackets, they actually.
Ran out.
Ran out of, it's still.
They all ran out.
But it's a problem you wanna have. It's a problem you wanna have now. You know, it's kind of, it's kind of, you know, at a certain rate, you're bringing in a certain amount of money. Global weight, we're bringing in a lot more money. But when those people left there, they got gas, they got fuel, they stopped in A, they looked at our town. Most of them were from out of town, from what I'm understanding. So we're gonna, we're gonna run Facebook advertisement in the ground for them. And Ben is gonna appreciate his slow days when he does have them, so.
Well, they ate off food, too.
They, that's exactly right. At both locations, ran out of food. So it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful text message throughout the day that I was getting from Ben to see all that the aquapark finally being eaten, so.
Sounds like it'll be your opportunity to expand it even more.
Absolutely, absolutely. Sky's the limit. So I'm, I'm just, I'm glad it worked out.
Did you have a way to trace where these people have come from?
We could come up with one. We could actually put a sheet out there, have them, have them write down.
That might be an interesting point.
That's interesting, yeah, that's interesting.
Register.
(inaudible).
Meals tax discussion, pod for events on our Main Street.
Okay, I just wanna bring this up to give Cancel something to think about. I'm not looking to make any, any changes, but six years ago, one of the first events I attended on Main Street, I can remember it like it was yesterday, Jack Murray and myself was actually standing beside the black handrail on the side of the stage in the alley while an event was taking place. During that event, I think it was a whole 40 or 30 people there, and I looked around and thought how, I mean, things need to change. And there were, you couldn't find, there wasn't popcorn, there was nobody, no drink. It was just, just an event, and come to it, and starve to death, get thirsty, and I just, it was just. So, so we worked together with staff, we made some good things happen. But one of the things that I did to bring business in, I can remember talk, talking to Dorothy White, and, and, you know, she was talking about meals tax or a fee, and I said, "No, no, 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 don't charge nobody. Let them come in here and make some money." Now, you know, I, you know, this is, this, this place is dying, and let, let them make some money, don't charge anything. Well, now, we've got some competition and some things are happening on Main Street. So I'm not looking to throw a, um, you know, a wrench into the middle of the summer, but I will tell you that going into next, next year, we're gonna be looking at communicating better with the businesses, we're gonna strive to do that, and all the restaurants, we wanna be fair, whether it's a meals, whether it's the same 7%, or whether it's a flat rate meals tax. But we do need to recognize the businesses that we have on Main Street, not only on Main Street, but all across town, but the ones that are directly affected by food trucks are obviously the businesses that are on Main Street that night. So, um, I just wanna let you know that right now, we don't charge that percentage. They pay a business license, but, um, we don't, you know, the meals taxes.
Do the restaurants on Main Street charge a meals tax?
Yeah, yeah, everybody does. All, all, all restaurants do, yeah.
So if somebody goes to a meal truck, they don't have to pay that 7%, but if they walk into a restaurant, they do?
If they do pay the 7%, we're not asking for it back. So we don't charge, the town does not hold food trucks historically, well, since I've been here, uh, for meals taxes.
But the food vendors, I guess, do have to collect steak sales tax?
Uh, not unless we charge it, and I'm not, so I'm, I'm not gonna say they're not charging it, I'm just gonna say that we're not collecting it. And we're not collecting. And the whole idea was to simply grow Main Street.
When it started, it wasn't a restaurant industry.
It wasn't, it wasn't at all.
But now there is, it feels like it's an unfair advantage.
I'm with it, I'm with it.
Absolutely, I'm bringing it up, so.
It's unfair, I think it should be charged some, just as meals tax.
So we're, we're gonna look at it, and, you know, Lee Han attends these classes and seminar, and she knows how other localities are doing it to make it easy to keep up with. And, um, again, I'm not trying to go spiral in the middle of the situation this year. But going into next year, there will be some changes in capex.
Okay. Uh, new business recognition program?
Okay, um, another area that, that I'd like to request some preliminary support from Cancel, and we have a number of businesses, quite often, uh, that change on me that don't get recognized. You know, we, we have grand opens or chamber recognizes, but what I'd like to do is start a program up to where every month, um, I know in the last monthly, what was it, three different businesses, uh, were introduced to the town, but I'd like to.
Like one week?
Yeah, so it's four, but, but I, I'd like to get those businesses here, in front of you, and in front of the Cancel, and just let them know, show them some type of recognition. I've got some ideas in my head, and if you have any you wanna add to it, but just to thank them and let them know we see and we hear, and we, we recognize that investment. The Chamber, Chamber does a wonderful job at it. I think that the Chamber's representing the whole county now, um, so doing it independently as a town for the businesses that are inside of our political jurisdiction, I think is a good, good thing. So I'm, I'm not sure to what degree that recognition is gonna be. I'm all open for suggestions. I know staff's gonna tell me. I know staff don't tell me what they want me to do, but I just want to bring it up, let you know, and I know we got one new business started up in recently. I think it's incredible, so I'll be coming before you with some more information.
What about the recreation community discussion?
Yeah, another thing that I'd like to do in recreation, recreation is, is a big battleship. The amount of money that we budget to recreation is nowhere near what it takes to sustain a battleship that we could have. So recreation's got three employees. It's got Ben, and Ben's got two other employees. So after the snow starts dwindling away, they're in the pool, their concrete, you know, their elbows, and they're going at it. Then all of a sudden, Ben looks up and says aquapark. And Ben can't put the aquapark by Ben by himself, so it takes, you know, five or six of public works, and they bang it away to aquapark. And then all of a sudden, he remembers it's done for park, and then he remembers it's a summerside. He just goes, oh, and oh, and oh, and oh. It's bigger than three people can sustain, but how can we sustain it more efficiently? How can we grow it? How can we capitalize on events that we have? So what I'd like to do is create a recreation committee with an objective to collectively build the recreation programs that we can have and the recreation programs that we have with a knowledge of a budget. So several years ago, in discussions and talking with Council, you know, I said I could build your recreation department if you could find it. And that's the biggest thing. We've thrown a lot of money into aquaparks, and that's got a return invested. Last week showed that it can be possible. But it takes a lot of manpower. It takes a lot of, takes a lot of work to sustain recreation the way it needs to be sustained. You cannot do it cutting grass, weaving, maintaining the pool, and the pool itself's a full-time job, and by law, it's a full-time job. Matter of fact, the law looks at it every two hours, legitimately, every two hours. State legislation is making us check the pool off. So it's not, it's not something you can look at the pool and go do something and leave everything. It doesn't work that way. But anyway, I just want Council to support to create that committee. I'm not recommending who's going to be on that committee, but I think it's desperately needed in recreation in order to build the programs that we need and strengthen the ones that we have. So it's just kind of an update. I'll keep you updated when we move forward.
Thank you. We have some law changes effective July 1st, and our attorney's going to discuss them.
Yes, Council knows every year at the General Assembly, they make changes or possible amendments, deletions, omissions, whatever it might be, to the both traffic code and criminal code at the town. Officers in order to be able to enforce those changes need to, the Council needs to adopt and basically amend our section 16.2 within our code to make them effective. So what we need to do basically is do the adoption of the amended 16.2 as an ordinance tonight, and then also then adopt it as an emergency, so it takes effect immediately. So we need to be two motions after our read. It'll take just a moment. As the adoption of provision, Virginia State Code be ordained by the Council of the Town and Task of Virginia. At section 16-2, adoption of state law of article 1 of chapter 16 of motor vehicles and traffic ordinance of the Town and Task will be in the same hereby as amended as follows. Pursuant to the authorities, section 46.2-1313 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, all provisions and requirements of the laws and commonwealth of Virginia contained in the Code of Virginia, title 46.2 and the Code of Virginia, title 18.2, chapter 7, article 2, as amended, accept those provisions which are contained in this chapter and accept those provisions and requirements to violences which constitute felony, and accept those provisions and requirements which by their very nature can have no application to or within the town, are hereby adopted and incorporated in this chapter and made applicable within the Town and Task. References to highways of the state contained in such provisions and requirements hereby adopted shall be deemed referred to the streets, highways, and other public ways within the town. Such provisions and requirements are hereby adopted, mutatus mutandus, and made part of this chapter as fully as though set forth at length herein, and shall be unlawful for any person within the Town and Task to violate or fail, neglect, or refuse to comply with any provisions of the Code of Virginia, title 46.2, or Code of Virginia, title 18.2, chapter 7, article 2, which are adopted by this section. And the Council of the Town and Task will thus hereby adopt and impose the same penalties for the violation of any provision or requirement hereby adopted as imposed for a similar offense under the Code of Virginia, title 46.2, or in Code of Virginia, title 18.2, chapter 7, article 2, as amended, subject only to any limitation of the charter of the Town and Task. Need a motion to adopt, and then after it passes, need a motion for.
Can you give us a summary of that while you're talking?
Criminal code and traffic code, they're usually adopted, anything like, let's say, 46.2 and a DUI. Anything to change in the General Assembly this year, it takes effect July 1. The town does not have specific code for DUI. It is a misdemeanor offense. Our officers need to be able to enforce that with any changes. What it's done is it's basically incorporate our town code in compliance with state codes so they can continue to do their jobs seamlessly.
What's the first motion we need?
Just a motion for adoption of the section 16.
Okay, motion for adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Catherine's got it straight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Second motion?
Needs to be passed as emergency ordinance to take effect immediately.
It's overdue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, is there discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there other new business that we have failed to discuss?
I have one letter right here I'd like to read to Council from local businesses, from Altucher, Walt White. This is Town, Town and Task Fire Department. I, my entire fire firm, thank you for your quick and professional response to what turned out to be a false alarm at our office. We do not know the needs of your department, so we ask that you apply this where it must, where it is most needed. We are having our system checked by certified honeywell professionals to see if we can determine why their alarm was triggered. It was a frightening experience, but your efforts gave us reassurance and comfort. Thank you. We remain yours truly. David Altucher. The fire department received a check for $500 so Ben can buy stuff at aquapark. So that's. But good job to Josh and his team down there, so I just thought I'd read that and put you on.
Thank you. Good news is good news. Is there anyone who's signed in? No one signed in?
No.
Okay, thank you. This time, we are going to executive session. Our executive session is consulted legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, and we're also going to have an executive session talk for.
Plan and Commission.
Okay. This time, we will retire to pick. Is there a motion? That we're going to pick?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?